Being here, I'm sorry I'm a little late. Had a paying job to take care of. All right, we'll jump right in with the discussion of the Working Waterfront project. I have it down as the Working Waterfront team. I'm assuming Jessica, you'll be the point person on that?
Yeah, but not for long. So I just want to introduce Scott with GMC. We're here to kind of talk about what we were following up on. You guys passed back in the spring, the scope of work minus the ADA portion. We went back to an ADA professional to really look over what was being presented there. We spoke with ADCNR, who is our funder. And, you know, I know that we've had conversations with some of the council about this. And tonight, we've got Scott here and his team to kind of present to you what we have come up with as a result of those recommendations that were made to us from ADCNR and the ADA professional. So, Scott.
Can I also just preface that with saying that not only have we met internally with city staff, but we also pulled together our Restore Steering Committee, which is comprised of also two council members, to meet with GMC, to meet with Rick Heinrichs, and to talk through some of this process to make sure that when we came to the council that we had a good plan in place and hopefully one that you can move forward. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Scott Hutchinson with GMC. I'll be brief, and then I'm returning it over to Adam to go through a few slides with you and just prompt some discussions. And, but just glad we're finally here and hopefully we could, we could do something tonight to maybe move forward. You know, it's been a little over a year since, since we came to a screeching halt on this whole, whole project. And I think that, that right now, that the, with the cities hiring the consultant to do the, the ADA report and coming back and you have their report, and I think he's, he had a presentation on it. So using, using that, that advice and recommendation, we're, we're seeking really clarity on, on two things. One, ramp or no ramp? And then if the answer is yes, we, we are going to do a ramp, then exactly where? And what we're doing tonight will just be throwing some ideas at you. This is not a presentation of a, of a design, just, just to kind of help us understand and talk through it. And then we'll, in the future, we'll come back with some design concepts for you to consider as a council and get whatever public input you, you desire on those, on those items. And so, again, don't, don't get hung up on what you see tonight as this is what we're proposing, it's just, just prompting some discussions. So, again, we just need some, need some direction from the council. And then, then we can, we can move forward and if, if there are complaints or whatever about the process moving forward, we'll all be in this together. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Adam, let him make a little presentation.
Before Adam gets up, can I make just one more statement? One thing that I probably should have said is when we met with the steering committee, we, we came to them with three options. We said the first one is to proceed as we have currently with the conceptual plan that we have with the ramp and the current place that it is, based on those recommendations by the ADA consultant. Two would be to abandon the project altogether because we are under a time deadline that is putting some, you know, putting some pressure on us for the grant. If we did that, if we abandoned the grant, obviously there is some ramifications with the Restore Committee, plus we would have to reimburse $240,000. Or three, we could take away all ADA accessibility from the top of the bluff down to the bottom, which would be remove the stairs and not put the ramp in place, which we would be violating our own ADA, ADA transition plan and some other things. But those were basically the three options that we, that we discussed because those were the only things that we could do, we could talk about really to move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Jeff Montgomery, can I see you here for a moment? I'm having some computer issues, so carry on.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Adam Martin. I'm a landscape architect with Goodland Mills K Wood. Joined the team just over a year ago, so glad to be part of this project. I was asked to come up and just try to help everyone understand what you've all, let's see, what you all have seen and planned, specifically focused on access in the ramp. Right now, there's four access points identified as part of this plan. Two stairs, one would be a new stair, and then access to the west through Fairhope Avenue. This would be satisfied through something called PROWAG, which is Public Right-of-Way Access Guidelines, which some of you may be familiar with. And then on the south side of the park would be this switchback ramp, that ramp, which I'm going to talk a little bit more about. So, you know, one of the things, just if I could, I don't know how to back up with the mouse, but, you know, in plan, they look, you know, very intimidating, I suppose, or overwhelming, but you've got to remember that we experience, the way we experience these things, you know, we're human, so we're going to experience these things in perspective. And, okay, all right. Can we back up? I don't know who's. Okay. So some of the things you experience, you're going to see handrails, of course, you're going to see some structure, you're going to see, obviously, the surface of the ramp, but, you know, it does, it doesn't have the same appearance as you might see in plan. So it looks sort of imposing in plan, but, you know, in perspective, we can, there are design options for things like rails. If they're imposing, you can try to make them go away to a degree. You can landscape them, you can even have artistic railing designs that, and they could even tell a story in some ways. So there's certainly design options out there for these access features. You know, again, you know, landscaping them however much we need to, just if, if the issue is an eyesore of structure and handrails. As long as it's, can be identified in the park, landscaping is not a bad option. So just kind of wanted to show you really quickly, you know, how some of these things can be treated. And then go through some well-integrated examples of these features. This is out in California, but this is one that is really sort of been sensitive to this landscape specifically, you know, allowing trees to grow through and being, being sensitive to the boulders and rocks and landscape, things of that nature. And there's a couple of good examples in your town, but there's some of the things we may try to avoid from some of the examples in Mayday Park. You know, the heavy handrails was one thing we have come to understand may be sort of an issue in this, you know, excessive or overly exposed structure. It could be something we could try to avoid, you know, just as we develop the design. You know, this might be considered a better example of how that was dealt with, with the expanded metal panels that sort of disappear a little bit, allowing you to see through more and see more of the landscape, and it blends in well with the landscape. And so, looking, you know, getting past sort of the principle of ramp design, wanted to show you a little bit of what you might see in the landscape as it's designed in the current sketch. And so we went through a sort of basic diagram process of how, you know, we could take some images and overlay some line work and show you the type of line you might see in the landscape. And so just take those images and break them down very basically. So this would be taking the, this perspective image, this photo, and those are the topographic lines you've seen in that image in Cyan. And then what you would really see is this ramp that switches back behind the trees there. I think it's important to note that right now, it is sort of hidden by landscape. And we would imagine it would, if it was as implemented as it is shown in the current sketch, it would probably be just as well hidden over time when the landscape grows and sort of starts climbing up the handrails and things like that. So it could be integrated. This is a photo taken closer to, taken closer to the water. Again, hidden by a couple hundred feet of tree canopy would be pretty near low visibility, I would say, in this image. So if you're, where most of the people are going to be hanging out, you wouldn't see it so much, but this was just one of the illustrations we wanted to point out. And then from the top of the bluff, you'd probably really just see, I mean, just for instance, those stairs right there, obviously, they descend down the hill. So from the top of the bluff, you're probably not going to see a whole lot. You're just going to see where you meet, the sidewalk meets the ramp to start descending down the bluff. But there are still, there are options. If the concern is to be sensitive to the bluff itself, I mean, we can certainly move most or not all, if not all, the structure off the bluff so that you could, you know, arrive to the ramp from the top side of the bluff, walk across a sort of bridge, so to speak, and then you would meet the structure. And this might be something you would see, you know, just really the extension of the sidewalk to the ramp structure. And here's, you've seen these, I'm sure, being in a coastal community. Everyone's seen things like this, you know, that's one of the ways you might cross a dune to be sensitive to that. That's protective for many communities, so it's an option. You know, you can also do things, the way the hand railing is designed in this one is with the, the cabling, kind of make that structure go away a little bit. Here, it's much more opaque. So with that, just wanted to show you what you, we, we could be thinking about as we move forward in the design, and glad to entertain any questions.
I got a question about parking. Where would you propose parking at the ramp? And maybe that's, there's two questions. This ramp is at the south end of the park, are being proposed to be there. Would you have parking near that location?
Yes, there is, obviously, there would be plenty of parking, accessible parking at the bottom because, you know, access to parking here would be, you know, you would have ADA parking at the bottom of the.
Well, if you're parking at the bottom, I think people would argue why do you need the ramp? I'm asking at the top of the hill.
So for this feature, the parking would be probably along Mobile Street.
There, the existing lift station that's there, the parking right by it could be converted.
Converted, yeah.
And then, you know, and some of the residents, their concerns is all the parking that would be there, would you make that handicap-only parking?
It could be, yes, it could.
So that, so that, you know, the other people that are not handicapped would use other parking spaces?
Other parking, yeah.
Or, in other words, we can't make everything along Mobile Street a parking spot?
Sure.
Because, I mean, but, about, about how many handicap spots would that require?
I don't know what the requirements would, would be.
It's usually one, it's usually one handicap spot for, per eight, I guess, able-bodied spots. One per eight.
So, so if you just add all handicap, you're making a requirement. If you have one and no other ones, you're making a requirement. But I think, I think in this case, it'd probably be good to do several handicaps and several, maybe, I don't know how you identify, but, parents with a stroller type things or something beyond having a handicap sticker to park in it, but you may need that for, for taking a child in a stroller or some other reason you're using this ramp. There's a lot more reasons to use a ramp than just an ADA.
Well, you've seen, you've seen the pushback that we received, and some of it is, are people that live in the area concerned with all the parking. If the parking is limited to only those that really need to use it, I don't, I don't think it's a big problem. But if it's a, if we open it up to parking for everybody, then it is, is going to be a problem. So just ways to, Mayor, you?
I was just going to say too, and right now, the way the plan is designed, there are, right outside that lift station, there's some, there's some green space that you could probably use for a couple handicap spots. There is no more parking right now slated, except for what's there along that area of Cliff Drive. So I can see where you might put a couple spots there for like a mother with a stroller, and then the rest of them be, you know, regular spots. But really, the only other spots we're talking about, including, are those ones right there by the lift station, which I would say that's probably enough for about two handicap spots.
Okay. Now, and I appreciate y'all covering the aesthetics part of it because I think that's another reason that we're getting some pushback. What about the, people are concerned with erosion, for instance. They say bluff's been there forever, we don't have a problem, why are we trying to fix it? Why are we trying to restore the bluff when they don't perceive a problem? So can you address the, the issue, you know, by putting whatever it is you're going to put there, pilings, posts, whatever, into the, into the ground there? Can we be assured that, that the bluff will be as stable or more stable than it is now?
I, I think we can. What, what Adam showed you and the two, really, two different concepts you saw, the first with the kind of the blue color was doing a ramp that's kind of tucked in, yes, jump to those. All right, see the blue one? Just keep it on that. The blue one, you see the tight lines together, the contour lines?
Yep.
That's, that's the bluff. So the blue one would, you would put piles in the bluff to do that, to do that concept. Now, you could, you could do some different things to minimize those amount of piles, go with, with steel in the substructure and things like that to where you, instead of having eight-foot piles on center, you, you go to something longer than that. And, but you still have some piles in, in the bluff there. And even if we did that, obviously, there's some things we could do to, to keep that from, from hurting or causing further erosion on the bluff. But if you went to the pink, then that, if you see the, the first leg goes all the way past the toe of the bluff, that concept, no piles in the bluff at all. Everything's outside of the bluff face to do that. You bridge that first section to get past the toe of the bluff, and then you're out there in front of the bluff doing your, doing your, your ramp. Now, the downside to that concept is you're a little, yeah, you're, you're out there in, you know, in, in space more rather than tucked up against, against the bluff. So that's, that's some decisions that you'll need to, you know, we'll help you with those, but you'll need to make those decisions on really which, which overall concept you like there. And, and, you know, we could.
So with the second one, with these, I know you said that you would try to think that we would try to eliminate the, the, the structures shown. With that pink one, do those structures have to show, or would it be possible to create something to where it's not?
Good question. And again, we're, we're trying to avoid design concepts here, but, but, so we're, we're showing that, that example of the beach. The point of showing that is saying, here's, if you get out in front of a toe of a bluff, here's kind of what, what it's going to look like. But it's a bad example when you're, you're talking about what we can do on railing and decking and what the structure actually looks like. It's a bad example. So we're just trying to talk through those, those things. So, yeah, you, and we're not saying it's going to look like that.
Yeah, I'm just making that, I'm just.
Yes.
I'm just speaking aloud because these are questions I'm sure.
Yeah, I think to answer your question is you're right. There are design options.
Right.
That still have to be thought about moving forward.
So this is what I'm coming to off of what Jack was saying. There are design options with the pink line that are not intrusive to the bluff that wouldn't be so daunting as what we just saw. Is that correct?
Correct. That's true. I think just naturally, just because you've taken a whole structure and moved it out in front of something, you're probably going to experience more of that mass. It's just, you're taking more mass and moving it out. But yes.
Versus it being tucked against.
But there are definitely in both, in both designs, there's options for how we can try to conceal the rail, or not conceal, but try to make some of the railing less imposing and bulky and.
A lot of the options that they showed earlier, Councilman Martin, like with the, kind of the living wall, where you can put grass on them and different things, or have the cabling, you could use any of those options with the, with the pink diagram.
And there, you know, there's a lot of things we can do, but what we're trying to accomplish right now is simply ramp or no ramp and where it is.
You know, so back to the ramp or no ramp, I believe, weren't we going to reach out to the federal government and ask them questions, try to get ahead of the question and ask them for feedback of what they thought we were to incorporate in this project? And what was that answer?
We talked to ACNR about reaching out to Treasury, but obviously, I mean, they, they said, you know, if it, you have to meet ADA accessibility. It's a federal, it's a federal grant, you have to meet that accessibility. They said there's really no, no reason to even ask them because you do have to meet the accessibility.
Well, I didn't, I think it was just determining what, what actually met it and what did not meet it.
Well.
Because you said one of the three options is to not put a ramp and then to eliminate the staircase.
Correct.
I'm not endorsing that. I'm just saying that was one of the options.
Right, it was.
So that, to me, seems like you don't have to have it, when I thought we did have to have it.
Well, we'll, we'll check.
You have to have equal access.
You have to have equal access, right.
If you have, if you have the stairs, then you have to have equal access for someone who cannot use the stairs. If you eliminate all the stairs, it's equal to everyone.
Yes, it's zero to everyone.
Correct.
It's equally terrible to everyone.
It's equally terrible, that's right. But the problem with that is, again, as much publicity as this, you know, project has had, I mean, it would, I guess, show that Fairhope was just trying to do that, not create access for anybody, is one thing we were concerned about. But the other, the other part of that is just, again, you risk, once that goes to Treasury, I mean, if they're going to look at accessibility, they could say, well, you're not offering any kind of accessibility with somebody.
That's the question I was asking.
Yeah, with limited mobility.
I thought we had already asked them that question.
Yeah.
How favorably were, were they going to look at it if you eliminated access to everyone?
Well, and the conversation with ACNR was that if you did that, that Treasury would probably kick it back. They felt fairly surely that they would kick it back.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've spent a lot of time on this, obviously, and it's a significant decision, you know, but I think the primary focus of it so far has really been aesthetically what it's going to do to, to the bluff, aesthetically and potentially structurally. But I think what we're, and I get that's important because it's going to be there. I mean, that's a big part of what Fairhope is and what it offers is that area. And that's important to me also, but I think what we're losing sight of is by putting a ramp like this, the, what we're offering to those who might not have previously been able to enjoy it, and that's something to seriously consider also. And I know they, you know, the, the option has always been to drive down, and that's, that option still exists, but this, I think this creates another opportunity. And, and I get that we have options, but it doesn't really sound like we have any viable option other than putting this in.
That was what my point was, do we really have a viable option?
Legally, yes, legally.
Do we really not? Depending on, if the Treasury said they're going to turn down a project, then you don't really have that option of.
So we're talking zero sum, is what we're talking.
Right.
The thing that I, born off of Councilman Jay Robinson, and we've talked about this, and I, you know, just empathetically, thinking about someone that, that has to get to the pier, I wish, and I know we, we talked about it, but I would think if we're going to do it, we would have it closer, you know? And I'm just putting that out there because I'm thinking about other people, than so far to where they still have to get down and still have to track, you know, to wherever, you know, if there was a parent with a, with a child, you know? That's the only thing that.
That's a great question.
Could you, could you?
Well, let's see.
But the difference is.
They said it would just be longer, and that would cost.
And we, we discussed that at length.
But that's how all the deal, guys.
Okay.
We can't go with a genius to get it a little bit more closer, but if we can, that's probably an idea.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm going to argue against myself on that point in that I think where it is, is probably least intrusive and most aesthetically pleasing when it can be built in. But obviously, it does give access and opportunity to come down to the bluff area in general from that access point, still leaving anybody who wants to come directly to the pier the opportunity to drive down and park in one of the spots right there and have immediate access to it.
The other thing is, anybody that's going to go down is going to have to go back up. You go back up that mug, that distance ain't going to make a hill of beans a difference.
Well, and if you want to look at another angle, it's, it's giving access to a different part of the, of the park than you would have just by driving down to the, to the circle. Or if you had the, if you had the ramp dump out exactly where the parking spots are anyways, this is going to, to the far side of Bayfront Park.
Well, I guess to get back on track, all you're asking is either we're going to put a ramp or we ain't going to do it.
That's right.
Is that right?
Right, and, and.
I would imagine, or to think that everybody here, if we're going to do this project, we're going to have to put a ramp.
So this is the thing though, we got to get this going because we're losing time.
No, I understand that.
So we got to say, do we, what we're going to do.
I'd say one thing about Councilmember Conyers' point that he, I think he was trying to make is you got to think of the park as a, as a series of program features. You've got the fountain, you've got that area in front of the fountain along the water, you've got this sort of strip of additional waterfront that we're creating, we've got a couple greens, we've got the beach. So you've got to provide equal access to all these things. So if you allow Fairhope Avenue to be one point of access, and then you move this ramp further away, and you get, you wind up creating some imbalances to access, so it's just something to think about. We don't have to figure it out tonight, but that was one of the reasons the ramp was placed where it was in this sketch. The least intrusive, but also it sort of balances access to the entire program of this park.
So, council, we have, and y'all, I've got a scratchy throat, I'm scared to death to cough up here. You know, something natural. I'm trying to clear my throat, but, anyway. So I believe it's agenda item, is it 23 tonight? What number is that? Make sure I got that number right.
23?
Yeah, so 23. So that's where we're going to be asked to add this, and this would be, this would be adding this to the Working Waterfront and Greenspace Project. And I believe that would be the final component. This is the only thing that was missing from that. So I think that some of you have just stated it, so you're, you're okay with that? Is there anything else, you know, while we have the engineers up here, is there anything else that you think that should be added to this before we get to that item on tonight's agenda?
No, I don't think it's anything to be added. I just think after we get to this item and each and every vote that we make, hopefully in a positive manner, that, you know, that community of people that, that are, that we're thinking of right now, those that are in wheelchairs or handicapped, that we should bring them in and incorporate them into some of this to see, maybe, as we go forward, you know, if that's possible, for sure. We all have a different perspective.
The other thing that I'd like to mention too, and as we move forward, I mean, again, there will be a lot of more time for public input because as we put these on council agenda for design approval, for bid approval, you know, for y'all to award the bid, that's always time for public input. So people who are kind of criticizing the fact that we're not holding specific public meetings just for this ramp project need to understand these are public meetings, there's opportunity for public input, they can reach out to their council members if they have concerns, and this will not be the last time they see this project.
Well, let's be honest, I think most of the big pushback, it's either they just simply don't want it. And so by putting it in the plan, it's not going to change. You can have all the public comments that you want, they're just, they're not going to want it, period. We're being honest here, right? Any other comments on that? Jimmy, any other? Okay. Jessica, is there anything else that needs to be added that you know of? Am I leaving anything out?
No, I did want to point out that number 23, you know, we're talking about the, the ramp and the placement, but as part of that resolution that's on the council agenda tonight, you know, they do have to put it in the least intrusive place. There is, is spelled out in that resolution that is least intrusive. So I would encourage you to, to really look at all of those very specific details. Additionally, tonight, we have Chris Riley here. He was in our original steering committee for this project, and I know he had some comments for this. I don't know if now is a great time for us to do that.
No, this is work session, not council meeting, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Let's not get out of order. I'm sorry, Chris, but you will have an opportunity at the beginning of the council meeting.
I think that's it, unless you have some more questions.
I have one. The fact that a ramp or no ramp didn't stop the rest of, I mean, that's just one component of this entire deal. That design was still going on or nothing?
Right. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to committee reports. Councilman Martin?
Um, I have none.
Okay. Councilman Conyers?
Um, let's see, right now, the only report I have is that the tentative date for the library to, to hold a retirement party for Martin Lino is tentatively Monday, November 1st. So I think that's all pending COVID, et cetera, just see how things continue to go. But right now, that's, that's a planned date.
Thank you. Right. Okay. Councilman Robinson?
None for me.
Councilman Boone?
So we had a real good personnel board meeting to which we discussed the Auburn study, which I think we're going to make a lot of headwork with that, helped the mayor out with a lot of the work in that study, and also brought the two members that we're bringing up tonight, they were there, just introduced them to how we work, and I thought it was very good to have them there. We voted on them tonight. There was nothing, there was nothing voted on or held because we have a court, but we did, they were, some pretty good discussions on everything we had, worked out real well.
Yeah, Council President, there were two, one thing with the recreation board, we have two additional members that will be voted on tonight as far as resolutions, and also a bylaws change in, in our agenda tonight as far as the records.
And I think during this work session, we're going to get to that resolution that we're going to have to be walked on tonight. There's some, I want to go through that and work on that a little bit because that's going to take some time, and, and we can do it in this, we can do it in this work session. So I'm going to let department heads give us updates, but just because it looks like we have a long time, we still have a very long agenda that I'd like to go through before the meeting, and, and also something that needs to be walked on, that we probably need to have a, a fairly significant discussion on. So I'll start at the front. Richard? Let you go first tonight.
Not too much, I've kind of updated on projects, but probably the one that's been inconvenienced to most folks is Twin Beach. They're, they're moving along. We're thinking that the, they're, they're now working on the west side. We got the, the east side back open, and that's helped a lot with the school, school traffic. With good weather, they're, they put the drop dead, that they would be out of there and all roads and signals up, and, and the temporary signals hung, hung and working by October 11th. But with good weather, I think we may could come in a little earlier than that, maybe by the end of the month. So that's been a, that's been a tough one. The detour is not fun, but it's moving on. And then just kind of thinking about the season, just so you know, we, we started trimming up some trees downtown, and we're going to start stringing lights next Monday. So hard to believe that fall is upon us.
So on that Twin Beach project, if you're traveling west on Twin Beach, is the, I don't know, they, they haven't put in the signalization yet for the turn lane, so the left turn, not actually functioning like they're designed yet, so that we have a turn lane in there.
That is correct.
You can turn, maybe right, and you have a little extra space, but technically, the left turn lanes haven't been added, right?
On, if you're, if you are traveling west, so you've passed Pirate Drive and you're heading west, yeah, they have it temporary strike. Now there's, there's multiple lanes there, but the signals have not been changed out yet, so you're not getting the full effect. But they will hang the, the, the new heads up on the, on the current structure with the, we all know that the mast arms are a lead item, and they're thinking December, January, they'll come back in and, and one night, be putting that up, and the next day it'll be up and, and complete, so.
Okay.
But that's all.
All right. Jessica?
Just a couple of things. The Parking Authority met for the first time in a long time on August the 25th. We have six of the seven required members for that. We had five of the six people at the meeting. They're very excited about their job on Parking Authority and have asked to meet monthly until we are done with the Arts Alley project, which is pretty great. They are very excited about what they've got to do. So we will meet again the two weeks from today at 8:15 at the Fairhope Museum. So I would encourage you, if you're interested, to please come, we would love to have you. Junior City Council applications are all in, we'll be beginning that process this week for selection, and so hopefully at the next council meeting, we'll be able to bring those to you. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, that application deadline was extended to the middle of December, but we are currently working on the two applications that we have, which is the generators for lift stations. That's, I think, oh, Jason, I might be wrong, I think it's nine lift stations and three water pumping stations that are on that application. We expect to have that into Alabama EMA by the end of the month. And additionally, the Safe Room application is currently in progress, and that'll probably be the end by the middle of October. So that's great news. And then additionally, the Church Street project, so the infrastructure project that they've got going on right back here behind us, beginning next Monday at 8:00 AM, they will move to the second phase of that where they shut down the intersection at Magnolia and Church. That closure should last from 8:00 AM next Monday until October the 25th, give or take a little bit. We hope it's take a little bit instead of give a little bit, so we'll all knock on wood for good weather. So be prepared for that closure to come up.
Kim?
We are starting to get into year end and starting to do some planning. I sent out messages to staff today that will be closing the warehouse the last three days of the month for inventory. So those are just things that we'll be rolling into closing the year out. I have two items on the agenda that if y'all have any questions. Item number 11 is about our, we're moving forward for our Symbol Clinic. And the city of Foley, the city of Guff Shores, and Ballin County all have some, all have clinics, so there's four clinics that we would be able to share, their employees would be able to use our clinic, and our employees would be able to use their clinic. So it's, it makes accessibility countywide for employees. So I know, speaking of Ballin County, they're excited about their employees that are in Fairhope that would be able to share clinics.
Explain to council, though, how that works. I mean, if somebody works for the city of Foley and they come to our clinic, the cost is passed on
Yeah.
for that visit to the city of Foley.
Yeah, so they're billing, they'll get the, they're, you know, it's, it's eighty-nine dollars per, per visit. So if they come to our facility, we're not going to get that bill, Ballin County's going to get the bill for their employees. If, if I go to Foley, Foley's clinic, the bill's going to come to Fairhope for that visit that was at Foley's clinic. So it just makes it, each city has the, is creating the, the capital of having that building, but Symbol itself, as they see each, you know, patient, they're sending the bill to the proper area. And they're going to send a name, you know, who, who they seen, and we can look through it and realize that's not our employee. So I think it's a good benefit for all. And then the item number 25, this is on our stop loss. So our stop loss is for health insurance for any claims that is over a hundred thousand, then our stop loss company picks those claims up and reimburses us. And so Cobb's and Allen put out an RFQ on this, and we actually got a reduction, a small reduction. And the other thing with the stop loss, there'd be no large, no, no large claims come out of it for future large claims. And then the second part on this resolution is on the high premium plan, what I call the, the premium plan. Currently, right now, if you go to an urgent care, it's thirty-five dollar copay, and we're recommended to go to fifty dollar copay. And the encouragement of this is when the Symbol Clinic is up and running, which hopefully is January 1, that's where this will come in effect, is January 1. It would encourage our employees to go to the Symbol Clinic where they'll pay zero copay to go to our clinic versus they may want to run out to an urgent care. So that's just the, that's just trying to drive to the right areas that will save the city money.
Kim, I noticed the, in the stop level, the stop loss level is, is a hundred thousand dollars. You know, it wasn't that long ago, it was sixty thousand dollars, and then it went to seventy-five thousand dollars. And I, I see now it's a hundred thousand dollars, and, of course, the rates are a lot higher than they used to be. I mean, even with the best rate that we can get, I mean, I, we did an analysis of, of what it would cost approximately if we had a, a lower stop loss level, say seventy thousand?
We were at eighty previous year, and it was just recommended, when we sat down and looked at what that premium difference was, we didn't look at it this year, but it was last year, we looked at the premium difference going from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand, and that's where, you know, I guess when we met with you and Jimmy, it made more sense to go to the hundred thousand.
I didn't, I didn't know that. I, I was told that the, the premium is three percent less, but our deductible went up by twenty thousand dollars.
No, our deductible, that's, we still have a hundred thousand dollar deductible.
Last year, you said it was eighty?
No, if I'm getting this right, our premium prior to October of 20, so if you go from October of 19 to 20, that was eighty thousand. And last year, we changed.
Last year was a hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've.
You need to compare, okay, good, now you're comparing.
Yes, so comparing apples and apples.
Okay.
We're, we're staying the same at a hundred thousand, and we had this year two claims to go over, two members' claims to go over the hundred thousand.
I guess it might have been, it might have been nice just to see what would have happened if that number was lower.
If we went, I mean, and I could have them go back, but we.
I, I'm, I'm going to guess, and they do a pretty good job, that they would have put that out there for us if they thought that was a benefit, but I just, it's a trend, it's just another, you know, rising cost of healthcare trend that I'm seeing, and that, that stop loss used to be, you know, our, so the hundred thousand is what we have to pay before the policy kicks in, and it used to be like fifty thousand, sixty thousand.
Yeah, so after a hundred, they pay, but up to a hundred, we pay.
So we, this past year, we increased it to eighty thousand, and when they ran the numbers, when y'all looked at it, it made more sense, you know, for the premium, for how much the premium, your premium's going to be higher, you know, the lower the deductible is. So, I mean, it's, it's where you want to be.
Well, it's a guessing game, too.
It is, it is, it is a guessing game. It's, it's where you, you've got to feel comfortable within your fund of how much you're going to pay for that stop loss.
And with a low number, well, and it could change, but having two people that went over a hundred thousand, I guess the lower the number, the, the, the more it makes sense to have the higher level, right?
Yeah, we lower the number, and we have two, three go over the eight, let's say if it was at the eighty, then that, the, the stop loss is going to pay more, they're going to, they're going to pay more. And so before we made that decision to go, to move our stop loss the previous year, you know, we had some pretty good amounts that were going over, so.
Going over the eighty.
Yeah, so if you'll, our, our stop loss was going over a million dollars before we made a change last year. So if you'll see on this one, our stop loss is right at a half a million. So that's where we were, we had to make some decisions last year to, I mean, we cut out specialty drugs, and we had to make, we made some changes on this, on the stop loss, and, and had it bid out. You know, Cobb's and Allen, I think, did a great job of going out to the market, but our stop loss before we made the decision last year, it was going to be over a million dollar just for stop loss.
How many, is this, does this tie us to any specific term? Is this a year-over-year, or is this is not a multi-year contract you have to sign with them, is it?
It's, it's my understanding, it's, it's for a year.
Okay, and the reason I ask that is I also noticed it says it includes a forty percent renewal rate cap.
That's right.
Because, well, if it was multi-year, and they went up forty percent on you next year?
They, they can, that's, that's the cap, that's the cap of it. Yes, I mean, and if you remember when we were dealing with, two years ago, we seen thirty-seven, thirty-five percent, it was thirty-five percent increases, two years in a row.
I get you in there, don't I?
Yes.
All right. Questions for Kim?
What agenda item was that?
Twenty-five.
Thank you, Kim.
Pat?
Just real quick, all fall seasons are pretty much kicked off. Obviously, we're hosting a great deal of football events right now. Tonight, we have JV and ninth grade playing games at the stadium. Thursday will be St. Michael, and Fairhope will be playing Davidson on Friday night.
Does St. Michael's play with the Pirate on the field? We don't change that, do we?
Oh, we have to continue, continue painting it for the rest of the season now, yes.
Okay. That's what I was asking, yeah, we'll go back, paint the grass green, and then redo the logo.
No, it'll stay the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
It looks good. Oh, the stadium looks good, too. beige and color.
I just want to remind y'all, we have the Alabama Coastal cleanup on Saturday, and Fairhope always has a great turnout in our zone at the Fairhope Pier, eight to 12 PM. So anybody who volunteers, we give them free t-shirts, we'll have a cookout, hot dogs, water. So y'all come out, we've got a lot of groups that have already pre-registered, but everybody's welcome to come out Saturday, too, eight to 12, Fairhope Pier.
Chief Ellis?
Good evening. I'm, I'm happy to announce this, earlier this year, we applied for an AFG grant, assistance firefighters grant to update our tools on the rescue truck at Station 3. And we were notified about two weeks ago that we were awarded that grant. It's a ten percent match, and the fire department took care of it at no cost to the city, so just wanted to let you all know.
Very good. Excellent. Gerald?
Real brief, don't have anything on the agenda, just want to let you know, we, like, we're interested in what you're saying, we're starting Christmas lights, so we'll be stripping lights, and I forgot to leave Jamie, it's been a crazy Monday, maybe we'll have tomorrow, and see which trees to trim. We are opening the bids for the 46 sub transmission, 12 distribution work on Wednesday. Conrad and I have been working pretty heavily trying to order a whole bunch of parts for that, so, other than that, that's it. They do have a westbound turn light, five pack, does have a turn light, so just letting you know, coming away every morning, so, yeah.
Yes, a turn light.
They don't close the gas station.
Jason?
I don't have a whole lot, if, if it's okay, we're going with the agenda. I've got certain things on there.
Yeah, you can go through those, yes, sure. Please.
The 13 is Volker, that's our NPDS permit, and I think I mentioned a few months ago, was coming due next year. We have to have the permit completed and turned in a hundred and eighty days prior to the expiration date. We are very concerned with the permit because that gives ADM the opportunity to revisit limits and add monitoring that we don't have, so I'll bring back the next meeting the costs for the engineering logistics, and also, they're going to take care of the DIZ report you see on there, is the, is the discharge information zone, is what ADM calls that for discharge in the bay. Where, where I'm from, that stream modeling would be the equivalent, and that's where they'll look at that to base our limits on, what's going on in the bay. So all this will be a very tedious process that they'll go through, and I, I really dread what's going to, but we'll see. WR Mitchell is the renewal, that's a three-year contract, and I think you all have did the last two years.
Twenty dollars, is that one?
This will be sixteen.
Okay.
That's who we're, and that's also who we're utilizing on the relocation for the Twin Beach project. We're having to relocate some sewer lines, so they were also the contractor that we already had out to be able to use.
So, yeah, we added fifty thousand to that, correct? Is that the one we added fifty thousand to, to make it three hundred thousand?
Yes, it was two fifty last year, it's three hundred this year. Seventeen is the 181 project. I think I've mentioned two meetings ago that Aldott had requested that we do not replace that water line on the east side of 181, they wanted to put it on the west side. We did all the engineering and design for the east side, and we didn't know that until we submitted permit application, and that's when they came back and said they don't, they would prefer us to put it on the west side because they're buying right away on the east side, and they haven't bought down that far, so it'd be something that has to be relocated again in the future.
By us.
They did say we could put it in, but we would be totally up to the Fairhope to move it in the future, which. move it in the future, which, you know, that didn't make any sense at all, net. But by moving it to the west side, it's gonna increase the footage about nine hundred feet. Uh, but it's actually, it's doable, and it'll, it's, bigger or not, it'll even be a cleaner putting it on the west side, because we'll be able to go all the way up, past Stone Creek, and tie into that six that's there, that was put in a few years ago. This, this will add a crossing on thirty-four that we didn't have originally, but I've talked with the county, and I think they're gonna let us open, cut that, and use duct on that case and directional, so that'll save a lot of money. So, it's, it's a good project still, it's just this is where I'm gonna go back. And it's also adding ten thousand dollars, because they got a survey and did the design on the other side of the road.
I don't suppose they offered to pay for any of that, did they?
I'm done.
I appreciate the heads up.
Yeah.
I mean, I really do. I mean.
There's a lot of issues with that line, you know, some things you may not wanna say in open meeting, but the one is, the water line is under edge of pavement. And when we keep having these breaks, we just had one a couple of weeks ago, it washed out from under the highway. And ALDOTs, they're now fixing it. If you've noticed, their equipment's sitting there on the side of the road. They're actually fixing the road. So, I still think this is time-sensitive, that we need to get this done as quick as possible, before there's further issues. And nineteen is just the dumpsters at the wastewater plant. That's for the screenings and the grease. Republic calls, takes those to a facility in Mobile. So that's sixty-nine, sixty-two per year. That's, uh, twelve dumpsters per week.
Sound too bad? Okay.
Yeah.
Anything for me?
Just, you know, we're gonna try to have that work session for, for water and sewer, for the budget, uh, soon. And, uh, you know, I don't know if you have it. I saw something come across my desk recently, where it was more of a system-level drawing, I think. But anything that you have that can give the council, you know, that, that overview of where we would be in five, six years, and, you know, when you're talking about the big projects, you know, well here, twenty-four inch main to this point, you know, just, I think things like that help us. I know you've driven around with everybody, but I think it'll help us see the big picture. And, and I know, especially for me, I won't say, well then, does it make sense to put this line here, when growth may be here? It should all, in other words, you know, you wouldn't wanna put in a lot of capacity where we're not gonna be growing. You know, we don't anticipate a lot of growth, you know?
Right.
There's parks that, you know, are landlocked now. So I think it'll help us rationalize that. And it'll help us with the citizens, too, to understand what, why we're doing what we're doing as well. So, you know, and I know you're so busy, I don't know if you have time for that, but any, anything you can give us like that, sketches or pictures worth a thousand words.
I'll take care of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Travis? Chomping at the bit.
I went ahead and stood up, 'cause I didn't think Jason would talk that long.
How'd you shoot the other day?
I shot a little better than you, from what I understand.
Did you? Run that goal.
There you go.
I didn't look at, I didn't look at the score.
That's right.
I knew you were following me.
Hey, if he didn't look at my score, I'm lying all day long. That was a good shoot, though. Enjoyed a great, great, great charity and all, and good fundraiser for that. So it was awesome. Uh, just a couple of things, just wanna let you know, we're gonna be paying out the first incentive this week for the vaccination. I would say we're probably at about a third of our employees at this time that are vaccinated, so I think it's a great thing. Um, as Councilman Boone mentioned, we had a great Personnel Board meeting last week. Um, the mayor and I presented a few policy updates to the Personnel Board that we hope to bring before you all soon. Um, we're kinda making some edits, some suggestions that they made back to us on those policies. And then we'll be bringing those, probably in a work session first, and then before, um, actual meeting. Uh, and then just one last update. We hired a new HR coordinator today, Kim Shaw. She is coming to us with about eight years of HR experience. She also worked for the City of Daphne for about ten years in some various roles, so we're very excited to have her. She started this morning, so hopefully y'all get a chance to meet her soon. So, if y'all don't have anything for me, that's all I have.
Uh, I have one question.
Sure.
Do any of the new guidances from the federal government, are they impacting us as far as being a government entity? Or are they gonna be asking us, are they gonna hand it down, some kind of mandate? I got this question this morning.
Yeah.
And I heard that the state of Alabama, uh, maybe said they weren't gonna comply with that. But then, you know, when the federal government starts saying, and I'm not saying they are, but they could say, well, we're not gonna give you your highway funds, for instance. I'm making that up. Don't quote me on that. But they can hold back federal dollars if there's not a compliance, so.
Yeah, I think we would have to pay attention a little more as some of that comes out. Um, from what I understand, talking to Michael Johnson, Safety Coordinator, this morning, a lot of that's gonna follow along with OSHA guidelines, which doesn't apply to municipality. So I think we will fly under the radar with that. Um, so, but we'll, we'll obviously pay attention to it as more of it rolls out. I assume you're talking about the vaccination mandate?
I am, yes, I am.
Correct.
So we have approximately a third of the employees that have received, uh, that vaccination bonus. Do you know if we have a lot of employees that are pending, maybe their second shots pending, that would push us up to, if you look at the national, uh, numbers and, and the percentage of vaccine, we all know, I think Alabama is dead last in the country. And, uh, and Baldwin County's numbers, you know, were low. I mean, depends on what side of the fence you're on, on that, I guess. Uh, I guess to sixty percent of people, they think, oh, great. But, uh, we were at about a forty percent.
Thirty percent.
Vaccination. We were maybe at thirty-five, and I think it's up to about forty now. Do you know if that number would be higher, once we have employees get the second shot? Because the thirty-three percent is even lagging the Alabama numbers.
Sure. So we set it up that we would pay it out in September, October, November, to give people the opportunity to get both, 'cause we are requiring that you have both shots before we give you, or if you get the one shot, you know?
Unless it's the one shot.
Of course. So, you know, I do. I, I've seen an update, you know, we're monitoring it, we're tracking it, as department heads turn that information into the HR department. And I, I, I was pleasantly surprised that, you know, once we signed the incentive, you know, the upswing in people getting vaccinations. But, yeah, we, they have to be fully vaccinated before they can get the incentive. And we're paying it out, you know, over the course of the three months, just to give people time to get.
Just wondering if it's really, is that just people that had already had a vaccination? If it's, if they're, if they feel incentivized to go get one?
I, I believe it's, it's incentivizing them to get.
And is that, is that one-third that you're talking about, is that people that have been fully vaccinated at this point, or is that people that have started the process period?
Fully.
Yeah, fully.
Do we know how many others have started the process, but are not quite there yet?
We don't, because we're, we're asking them, once it's completed, to notify us.
I think one number, too, that probably factors into that, since July seventeenth, we've had, what, fifty-five to sixty employees out with COVID?
Yes.
And of those, a small handful, I mean, I would say probably five have been vaccinated.
Yeah.
So, again, you also have to consider, those people, they're not gonna let them get the shot right away. So that's another factor that's playing into it.
That's a big number. That's a big percentage.
That's fifty, fifty employees, at least. So, um, anyway, that's another factor that's gonna play into that percentage.
Close to twenty percent of our employees.
Yeah.
They aren't ineligible for the vaccination.
Right, exactly.
Well, for a period of time.
For a period of time.
For a period of time.
Thank y'all.
Terry? Your beard grew out.
Yeah, good to see you, Terry.
My man. Fought a good fight.
I'll just bear with me for a little bit.
Yeah, God bless you, brother.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Really don't have much of an update, since I just got back today. We're extremely busy. Don't feel like we slowed down any at all. Um, I think I looked, this morning, I had over, almost five hundred emails. And, um, I wanna give Jeremy Little, Mark Davis, and Wes Boyett credit for what they've done, for taking up the slack. It's been amazing. But not counting the rest of the staff, also. Um, they have just done amazing job. I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's thoughts and, and the prayers that came my way, so.
How are you feeling?
I'm getting there.
Yeah, i- 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 it's a journey, brother. So just walk it one step at a time.
Yes, sir. I do appreciate it. But that's all I've got. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Just good to see you.
Yeah.
Glad to have you back.
Glad to.
Just good to see everybody.
Yeah.
No, not everybody, don't lie.
No, no. Right now, it's good to see everybody.
Right now, he's in that phase. Good to see everybody. Didn't like you, liked you.
It's good to see everybody, even real food.
No doubt.
It's just, you know.
No more puree.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. But thanks for everything. Thanks for backing me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hunter?
We do have, uh, one item on the agenda, uh, but it's a public hearing, so unless there's any questions on that, PUD.
Proposed PUD.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wait for that.
Public hearing, a couple ordinances.
Yep. Um, and do wanna just mention our September twenty-second meeting. Uh, there's flyers in the back of the room, and we're trying to canvas all the public buildings for the meeting from six PM to eight PM on September twenty-second, uh, at the Nick Center. That will be kinda the first public kickoff of the comprehensive plan. So want anyone listening out there to, to please join us. Um, nothing's really being presented, per se. It'll be the first kind of opportunity to discuss the process, kind of what opportunities will exist. And, and hopefully, we can engage people to, to, um, give us some ideas. What, what is their vision? And, and we can, we can address some of the concerns.
This will be virtual access as well?
Uh, it, I believe it's going to be streamed.
Yeah.
I don't know. Some of the, the engagement tools that they're using are gonna be, need to be local, uh, using Wi-Fi. But it will be streamed, it will be available to the public to watch. I don't think there's gonna be an engagement.
Well, no, no, just access.
But yes, it will be, even though it's at the Nick Center, we will be streaming.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Great. Eric?
Uh, the only thing I have, if you have any questions about Agenda Item Number Nine, which is some additional language that we're adding to our city code amendments relating to mini-storage buildings. They've got an explosion of mini-storages, and it's not real clear in the building code. And this is actually language that is going to be, it has been passed by the Code Council hearings, and will be included in the 2021 code, but we will not be adopting 2021. We're gonna wait to 24, but this, this is a good change that they did, so we're gonna go on ahead and adopt it as an amendment, if you see fit to do it.
Okay. Right, thank you, Eric. Not leaving anybody out? Okay, um, let me run just through the agenda again, real quick, make sure we didn't miss anything. I think we covered five, uh, six and seven, six, seven, eight, our final adoptions that were introduced and discussed in the last meeting. Eric mentioned Number Nine. Item Number Ten, if I may, before that is introduced. If you look at the recommendation from the REC Board, um, it's the Leading Director of Community Affairs and Recreation, Ex-officio Member of the Board, delete all REC League Presidents will also be considered Ex-officio Members of the Board. But in the notes, it says voting rights associated with being Ex-officio Members are not believed to be proper or prudent. So what I would ask you to do in that ordinance, under Article Three, at the end of that, where it says all Recreation League Presidents will also be considered Ex-officio Members of the Board, I would ask you to put in, with no voting privileges. Uh, and when you, when you talk about Ex-officio Members, uh, there's a lot of debate over whether or not an Ex-officio Member has voting rights or not. And it can be interpreted, uh, both ways, unless it's specifically stated. So I thought if that was the REC Board's intent on the recommendation, we'd just go ahead and state it. And then there's no, no gray area on that board.
Yeah, it was mentioned.
Yeah, okay. You got that, Lisa? Yeah, they're not, they're also not counted for purposes of establishing a quorum. Okay, Kim, uh, talked about Item Eleven. Item Twelve, um, I can cover that real quick. That is the money that we've received from AMEA now for many, many years. And we have taken that money and applied that to Hatch, our Business Incubator Program. And, and that is asking us to give that money, that twenty thousand dollar in grants. It's supposed to be used for economic development. And that, uh, we, we turn around and hand that to, uh, Baldwin County EDA, which in turn uses that to fund, partially, not, fund them fully, fund Hatch. But, uh, do you have any questions about that?
Nope.
Okay. Item Thirteen, Jason covered in his comments. Uh, Item Fourteen is approving the selection of Neil Schaper to perform professional engineering design service for a corridor study. Uh, who would talk to this? Uh, there's also ADA compliance at Southland Subdivision. Would that be you, Richard? You wanna give us a couple of minutes on that?
Yes, sir. And just to kinda bring you up to speed, as you know, we have, we have been dealing with a, a complacency issue. Um, and, uh, you know, part of our terms of voluntary compliance was to come up with a, uh, some solutions to some complacency issues, especially in the first phase of, uh, Southland Place Subdivision, which is Vivian Loop and Kemper, and that part of, of Southland Place Drive. And, uh, you know, one of the things that we, we did commit to, uh, in, in response is that we would move forward to addressing that. And what we're requesting council is authorizing the mayor to negotiate and not to exceed, to come back to council, to hire Neil Schaper, who did the preliminary survey, has done some pro bono work with us. We've met with the, the Southland Place POA, uh, last month, and, and it was a very positive meeting. So that's where we are in that, in that process.
Okay. Uh, Item Fifteen, Richard, is that you as well?
Yes, sir, uh.
The engineering report, our support for development and construction plans?
Yes, sir, we're, we're, we, well, we nearly lost, uh, a cross drain on Ingleside, north of Gaffer. Uh, it was exposed during the little bit of rain that we did get from IDA. And it's just a, it's a, it's a pretty nasty crossing there, that's probably original equipment. Uh, we think that, that expansion of the city was probably in the seventies, which, we got our fifty years out of the corrugated metal, and, and it's a pipe on top of a pipe. You have to see it to believe it. And we've got it kinda patched together right now, but we need to have survey and engineering to get it, a permanent fix done. So, that's what we're requesting there.
Okay, so that is just for the, that's for the engineering for?
And survey, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. See, Jason covered Item Sixteen earlier in his comments. Uh, he also covered Seventeen. Uh, I believe Jeff Montgomery, you would cover Eighteen, uh, the Munis Software. Anything we need to know about that, other than it's just an annual renewing of the license and fees? Okay, Nineteen, Jason covered in his comments. Twenty, uh, this looks like this is covered by a FEMA claim. Would that be you, Richard, as well? Erosion Control Services?
Just punching out projects. And actually, our insurance covered this, not FEMA. But, uh, just so you know, is, is due, as a result of Hurricane Sally, we had some serious undermining of what would be the, the porch on the, uh, the west side of the Nick Center. And kinda tracing all the root causes, we had some drainage in the front, that's routing under that porch, and this is, uh, addressing all that. And it is covered a hundred percent by the insurance claim.
Okay. Why is there also a FEMA claim? It says a FEMA claim was submitted as well.
We, we have to. And then FEMA is the insurer of last resort. And since our insurance, and we met our deductible, took a hundred percent of it, there's a FEMA claim, but it says zero on it. So that's what they're paying us.
And the same thing for Item Twenty-One?
Yeah.
I guess, and Twenty-Two?
Yeah. Pat knows more about that than I do.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead, and since, uh, those are covered by insurance claims, and, and then lastly, by FEMA claims, and, uh, go ahead and gloss over Item Twenty-Two right now, as well. Uh, that would be Pat, if we need to ask questions. Pat, okay? Okay, Item Twenty-Three, we covered at length in the work session. Um, Jessica, Richard, also, um, GMC are here for questions, if we have them. Item Twenty-Four, Kim? That's you, right? Item Twenty-Four, Kim, that's you, right?
Mm-hmm.
We just, I think you covered that, maybe what, the last work session, is that right?
Yes. That was, right, is that what my buddy did, he said this was bad.
Okay. All right, and then you covered the stop-loss, Personnel Board appointments, REC Board appointments. So, very quickly, I'm going to ask you at the beginning of the meeting to amend the agenda, and ask you to adopt a field use agreement for general field and tournament use. We took this up quite some time ago, and we said at that time that it was maybe just a step in the right direction. I think that maybe this is just another step in the right direction, I think that there's probably gonna be some more work that needs to be done, but this will cover one of our immediate needs, which is, it's a very big soccer tournament, it's gonna be held at the soccer fields or soccer complex by an out-of-town corporation, so we felt like we needed to get this new field use agreement in place. I can tell you, maybe some of the shortfalls of this is we still need to address the pool, that's not covered in detail in here, and there was something else that I saw, and that was on the, and I talked to Marcus about this for quite a while today, Corey, I hadn't had a chance to talk to you, I've had a crazy day, ask him about that later. Concessions, says concessions from city-owned concession facilities shall be run by the city or the corresponding officially recognized REC League, and concessions scheduled for Fairhope school events shall be run by the Fairhope Booster Club or respective school sport. So I was thinking about this rental of the soccer complex by a non-city, non-REC, non-school entity, and I don't know, you know, if you have all this in there, then that basically says you can't use the concessions, and we don't want thousands of people coming to a soccer tournament in Fairhope and saying, you know, there's no food to eat, or no drinks, and I know one thing they could bring in, they could bring in food trucks if they want, but Marcus did say that, I believe Blast is going to be helping them with this tournament, so for this particular tournament, it should work out. The other problem is that, you know, if they were to try to run the concession stand, and we were to try to charge them for that, they're using Blast concessions, I don't know if they, I don't know if we can turn it over to where, you know, where would we put the property that Blast owns? And of course Blast, until it's changed, it's Blast still runs our REC League. What do you think, Corey? I think you could put the caveat in there that somehow gives Pat the authority to allow another arrangement.
It's in here, I read that, I can't remember the page, but there was some in here where the city had the opportunity to make arrangements of sort that you're talking about, I read that verbiage somewhere, I can't remember where.
If you go down to Paragraph Four, it just says more general, that the city of Fairhope concession stands and sports complex buildings shall be operated by the city of Fairhope, or the officially recognized youth sports league of the respective complex, I mean.
Right.
So does that give?
That's where I saw.
I was gonna say, does that give Pat the authority, if somebody wanted to bring a food truck in, and he's in charge of the, you know, the tournaments coming there, to give that authority to him to do that, because that's a pretty gray area for us.
I would, I would ask Jade, to me, it sounds a little bit nebulous, and I would think we need to beef that up and more explicitly state that.
That's above my pay grade, but I did read that, and I thought that kinda gave a generalized opportunity for the city to make discretion.
Well, but you've got competing, I mean, if Paragraph Two up above says that it's only respective recreation, well, but I mean, what does respective recreational league technically mean? Does soccer club actually, probably falls under that, because they are soccer club slash REC League?
They do right now, absolutely.
And most of the sports fields, as y'all know, the youth leagues run the concession stands, and that's a way for them to make money off a lot of these tournaments, to put back into the programs, is to run the concession stands.
Yeah.
So that's one reason why, you know, food trucks haven't been allowed in, but there is something in there about vendor fees, so I guess that would be like t-shirt vendors, or they were selling, you know, whatever.
It states all of that.
But not food vendors.
Yeah, food as well.
Food, too, okay.
Yeah, vendor fees, there's a gross, based on gross. So this is, I think, I think we're going in the right direction now, but there's still, there's still some work to be all-encompassing, to be done, it's quite a task, I can't tell you how many meetings that we've had on this. Any questions on that? And Marcus is back now, actually, so you can ask him now, or you can wait until, until we get to that. I'm gonna ask y'all to add that as Item Twenty-Eight, public participation for non-Agenda items will move to Twenty-Nine. Any questions for Marcus on that? We were just discussing that facility, the field use agreement. Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn, and reconvene in about five minutes, and get started on time, if we can.